Subscribe to WROK on YouTube and never miss a meeting.
Order. We're going to begin with a quick introduction. I'll start down here with Commissioner Collo.
Colonel Collo.
Melanie Macy.
Pat Perush.
You guys can introduce yourselves.
Aaron Leo.
Paul Brake.
And Mike Fournier.
Kyle Dubuck.
Charlene Douglas.
Monica Hunt.
And I do that because we have roll call on our agenda, just in case it is a Zoom meeting by emergency. So we're going to begin tonight with an invocation given by Mayor Pro Tem Perush, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask that you stand if you can.
As we gather here this evening, we're moving into the fall season with schools starting and high school football games kicking off and cider mills opening and pumpkin patches curing up for the Halloween season. And in my case, remembering how I always listened to my dad extill the talents of the Cleveland Browns over the Detroit Lions. But at the same time, hundreds of thousands of our fellow citizens are struggling to put their lives back together after devastating weather events and natural disasters that have consumed our attention over the last few weeks. This evening, hundreds of our fellow citizens in Louisiana and along the Gulf Coast are still displaced from their homes and businesses as they rebuild and repair in the wake of Hurley and Ida. In the American West, thousands more people are still displaced after major wildfires have destroyed homes and businesses and in some cases, entire communities. And the weekend memorial services in Washington DC and New York City and Shanksville, Pennsylvania remind us that families across the country are still grieving and struggling with the loss of loved ones on 9/11. Here in Royal Oak, we are saddened and at times emotionally exhausted from watching and hearing the news recount and relive these tragedies. But those events remind us to reiterate our gratitude for our first responders and community volunteers who we have no doubt would have leaped just as passionately and professionally into the middle of the disaster if something similar had happened here in order to save lives, protect the vulnerable, comfort the victims, and restore order to the community. We join this evening in sending healing thoughts and prayers to our fellow citizens who are struggling to put their lives back together and to understand why tragedy ended up on their doorstep. And we join everyone in our own community in sending a fervent wish for peace and comfort and goodwill to all of those across the country affected by these tragedies, both now and in the future. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that brings us to item number five, which is the approval of the agenda. I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda and if we can add also an item 11 pertaining to our discussion in closed session about moving forward with a recommendation. Commissioner Macy?
We approve with the addition of an item number 11 to have proceed as recommended by council in closed session.
Motion by Commissioner Macy is our second. Second by Commissioner Dubuck. Discussion on the motion. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. We have an agenda. This brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda this evening?
Public comment.
Oh, public comment. I missed it. Look at that. All right, my glasses are fogging up a little bit. All right, so I take that back. It's item six, public comment. Just a quick note on public comment. The city commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to help us make decisions. Now is the time set aside to address the city commission on any city-related issue, whether it's scheduled at tonight's meeting or not. This will be the only time, as there are no public hearings scheduled for this evening. If you wish to speak tonight at public comment, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor. Then come to the podium. For the record, you will state your name and address. Please be mindful that the city commission wants to hear from everyone who wishes to speak tonight, so comments are limited to three minutes. There's a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. Please note that typically, we don't respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we're taking notes and will address those questions when the particular matter is discussed. If you wish to speak tonight, or you don't wish to speak tonight, don't hesitate. You can always reach out to us via email to have your public comment heard. So who's first? I see this gentleman here.
Thank you. Ronald Getler, 235 Orchard View Drive. You've probably all have had it happen to you. You pull up to a stop sign, look each way, everything's clear, you're about ready to pull out, and someone on a bicycle on the sidewalk cuts in front of you. I inquired of the police a while ago. I understood that they said that that person does not have the right of way. And I would, Royal Oak seems to have the corner on signs for cyclists. Our neighbors don't have any. And so I would submit that you would consider erecting a sign wherever throughout the community, reminding cyclists on sidewalks that they do not have the right of way. That may also apply to pedestrians, but I don't know that. But I would ask you to consider doing that. Someone, probably their life could be spared. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Getler. And I think that's an appropriate comment. We had, I had a particular situation where someone going on a boulevard just popped out of a bush on a bike going the opposite way. And you know, thank goodness, I'm slowing the pedal because it's difficult at times. So thank you for sharing that. Good idea. All right, anybody else wish to speak tonight at public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to speak on a couple of things. One item on your agenda today is the approval of appointments.
I'm so sorry. Can we have your name and address?
I'm sorry. Rebecca Cheesom, 519 Gardenia Avenue. So one of your items on the agenda is approval of appointments to committees, and my name is actually on two of those committees. And so I just wanted to come tonight and express my gratitude for that opportunity and talk a little bit about why I wanted to do that and also to voice support for something that came up since I put my name onto those, for those committees. So my name is on for Parks and Recreation and also the Healthy Aging and Aging in Place Task Force. I was interested in those because my background is in public health, and so I've been working in public health for a while. And I started an HIV prevention and youth development work. And in that work, I really saw that, yes, personal choices, personal responsibility do have an impact on health, but really, the environments in which we live really impact what kind of choices we even had to choose from. And so I really wanted to kind of bring that lens to those committees. About a month ago, you also were talking about a potential collaboration between the city and the YMCA. And I was really excited to hear about that. And I'm really very much in support of that. My family is also a member of the Y. I've lived in Royal Oak for about 10 years. My husband's had our house for 15 years. And our six-year-old daughter goes to Helen Keller Elementary. So we're very invested in the community. And so I just wanted to kind of, again, like voice my support for that potential collaboration and at least exploring it, because I'd love to have a community center, maybe with an outdoor pool would be great. And I'm really just excited to have the opportunity to serve on those committees. So I just wanted to thank you for that opportunity and pledge my, you know, that I'm going to be working to do my best to serve the community well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cheesom. We're so excited to have you too. And thank you for lending your perspective, your background, your expertise to the community. It's, you know, this community runs on volunteers like you, and we're very grateful for your willingness to step up and partake and help shape the community. So thank you. All right, who's next? Going once.
Pull my mask down, my glasses fog up. Bill Harrison, 2729 Trafford, Royal Oak. Got two things here. One is a post on Vincetta East Neighborhood, the Next Door blog, one of your surrogates published, and Royal Oak can review. Individual goes through the ballot regarding the memorial, the Veterans Memorial. Several things I don't agree with. Again, they reiterate the requirement to reimburse all that contributed to the memorial. I think we made that clear, that that is not a blanket statement. That's on a demand basis. And if anybody's had one of those grocery store or whatever refund coupons, the return on those things is in the single digits. So, and then it says a memorial event used only for other use, used only. The Veterans Memorial Event, use only and other uses are prohibited. Again, we had that discussion, that that's not the intent. And talks about this, people having standing to sue. We talked about that before and the fact that we had to protect the rights of people because every time somebody sues the city, the answer by the judge is, you don't have standing. All right? Now this one really upsets me. If this ordinance passes, there are no limitations on the expansion of the monuments within the parcel space. That's a dedicated space. There's no reason to think that it can't be, that additional monuments couldn't be added. What if one of the 14 soldiers that were involved in this latest fiasco in Afghanistan? What if one of those were a Royal Oak resident? You sure as hell would be putting up a monument to that person. Just grinds me. Says it's long-winded and worded to fool you into voting yes. Interesting, because it's my understanding that rather than a yes or no on the ballot, that's going to say agree or disagree. And everybody or anybody that's involved with any kind of a questionnaire or a survey is fully aware of the fact that how you word the questions steers an individual to one conclusion or another. It's just not right. As far as the review is concerned...
Mr. Harrison, I do need you to finish your last point, sir.
I'm done? Well, I knew I'd run out of time. All right. Does anybody have anything to say before I sit down rather than spinning it after I sit down like you always do?
That we do what? I'm sorry, I missed that?
I beg your pardon?
I didn't hear your last part there.
I asked if anybody had any comments before I sit down rather than letting me sit down and then spinning what I've said after I sit down.
No, just thank you, Mr. Harrison, for your comments. Okay, who's next? Mr. Wolf. Mr. Wolf.
This mic is off.
We can hear you.
You can hear me, but I couldn't hear Mr. Harrison.
Okay.
Can you please turn this mic on?
The green light's on.
Hello? 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 Can you hear me in the back?
No.
No one can hear me in the back. This mic isn't on.
The green light's on. Let's see. Are we getting...
Hello? Can you hear me still?
I can hear you.
Okay. Ron Wolf, 333 North Troy Street. I'll try to use my New York voice to be heard a little louder. This is for residents. What part of, this is a dedicated site, does this commission not understand? And do you want your city to rerun entirely for the benefit of the DDA and two non-residents stakeholders you are well aware of by now? And have this DDA pressure this commission to invade your neighborhoods with high-density development with no regard for parking, sewer, drain infrastructure, or traffic gridlock and the expenses they will cost the taxpayer? The public safety renewal is not exactly a renewal. It is admitted, is an admitted increase of approximately $1 million a year. It's your choice, people. You can believe the candy-coated promises again, or you can say no to being told that they do not need you to run Royal Oak. They can do it for you. Elect your team. 2021.com means just that. Not their team, which has funded, which has been funded in the past and probably even more so by 81% special interests and their attorneys that do not live here. It's time to take back your city, residents. And I want to admonish Charlene Douglas for her comment on Holocaust Memorial Day that it takes an entire group to put it on the agenda. I arrived late and I assumed it was on the agenda. It was not. I believe the only reason 9/11 was mentioned because it was mentioned on the internet. In the past, 9/11 has never been mentioned in Royal Oak. This city is more than Royal Oak. It's part of America and part of an American democracy. Unfortunately, the Republican Party and the Democratic Party, in my opinion, no longer exist. We have two parties now, dumb and dumber, and Royal Oak typifies this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. All right, who's next? Yes, in the back.
Pamela Lindell, 409 Inglewood Avenue. Saturday, August 7th, ROR, which stands for Royal Oakers for Accountability and Responsibility, had a 10:00 AM meeting, which was crashed by Mayor Fournier and Clyde Esprit. It was a planned attack, obviously, because the mayor was wired with a video feed. What reason would there be to record a public meeting but to scare or intimidate, suppress First Amendment rights? Why would the mayor want to interfere with our constitutional right to meet and assemble? ROR isn't a Republican entity or all Democrats. We're not all straight or gay, live at the South End or live at the North End. We're united in our quest to be involved in what happens in this city. Tax monies are being spent, and we just want to be a part of that. Royal Oak is bigger than the two square miles of downtown, well, one to two square miles of downtown where all this debt is. I can't tell you how many attendants at that meeting expressed gratitude that the mayor and his henchmen were refused admittance. Residents don't want to be, they don't want to be targeted or harassed, which is what this commission's supporters love to do. At the farmer's market, pushing a veteran, chasing petition circulator around, screaming in their face, calling business owners and their family members homes with death threats after this crap. It's outrageous. Clyde and Mike Fournier were asked to please leave. You refused, then engaged in a carefully crafted violent attack. I was there. I saw it. It unfolded right in front of me. Didn't you people learn to keep your hands to yourselves in kindergarten? This is appalling. That was shameful. You should be embarrassed.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lindell.
She's gone over to the edge.
Yeah, I think if there are any death threats that were put out there, hopefully you guys filed a police report with the...
Absolutely, the police knows.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, who's next? Anybody else?
Stephen Hartford, 1921 Rolland. So I really care about Royal Oak's residents and its businesses because I'm newer here in the city. And just wanted to give some constructive feedback about hurts, beats, and eats, because I think it could be improved. One is that we're already taxpayers and we shouldn't be charged to use the downtown public areas during this event and including using parking fees to park down there. I'm all for festivals, but not one that barricades public property in a downtown area. Sidewalks and entryways to businesses are not an appropriate venue. Second is the unnecessary air traffic activity. I live on the southeast side and I could hear air traffic from my house. There was helicopter tours, banner planes, et cetera. What if one of these accidentally landed on someone in a house or something like that? You know, helicopters, it's happened before. Little planes, it's happened before. Next couple comments are regarding safety concern. So there was too many people inside the event during that day. There was no signs of controlling whether how many people went in or out of the event, even during the current climate that we're in with COVID. There was obvious marijuana use in the center street garage. The festival attracts a lot of drug paraphernalia, it seems, because I could smell it. It's four days, really good for the health of our city with all of that. There was exposed power source cables on the sidewalk to, you know, the entrances to the sidewalks where it goes up a little bit. This is a huge tripping hazard to citizens, especially those that cannot maneuver very easily. And then also, the last one is regarding the booths for beverages for 21-plus crowds. So they're not trained mixologists who can identify signs of alcohol abuse and intoxicated individuals. Is this really an act of charity? How are these proceeds improving those less fortunate? Also, the event claims to support its local businesses downtown. These booths detract from the liquor sales in the local downtown establishments, as many patrons visit Royal Oak for.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Harrison. Thank you for coming up and expressing those ideas. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anybody else? Yes?
You, the city commission, have placed a charter revision proposal on the November ballot to make it clear that the state election laws apply to all elections in the city. On the surface, this looks innocuous enough, with at least some members of the commission calling it just housekeeping. If so, it's deep cleaning for the purpose of voter suppression. It would have drastic long-term consequences for the citizens of Royal Oak, who expect to have a voice in how their city operates. So I speak tonight on behalf of all Royal Oak citizens whose First Amendment right to petition the government for redress of grievances would be suppressed if Proposal 1 on the November ballot is approved. What does this right, fundamental to the U.S. Constitution, mean in practice? It is the freedom to encourage or disapprove government action through nonviolent legal means. Royal Oak's charter provides that citizens' initiative petitions meet the simple requirement of being signed by qualified electors equal in number to at least 15% of the electors voting at the last preceding general municipal election. That basis, those who voted in the last municipal election, is key. The current ballot proposal on the Veterans War Memorial is a good example. Approximately 670 Royal Oak voter signatures were needed to place it on the ballot. The city attempted to preempt putting it on the ballot by arguing that state election law applied. The interim city attorney argued that the language was legally insufficient, and the city spent tens of thousands of dollars on high-priced external attorneys fighting this ballot. I've spent the last 45 years living with an attorney who's done litigation, so I know that litigators throw every argument they can think of into their briefs to see what, if anything, can be persuasive. None of the city's arguments were considered valid by the judges. Systematically examining all the arguments from the city and from the plaintiffs, both the Circuit Court and the Appeals Court affirmed that Royal Oak's charter provisions for elections apply for issues that are strictly local. What would have happened if state election law preempted local ordinances? The petition would have been reviewed for sufficiency by the State Board of Canvassers, focusing on the number of signatures, but also with power to alter language in the summary, allowing for political motivations to creep in. More significantly, the petitions would have required signatures from at least 10% of the 22,517 registered voters, registered electors, sorry. And that would require some 2,250 signatures, an almost insurmountable number for citizens to collect. You should not have placed a charter revision on the ballot that will suppress citizens' ability to use the ballot box to have legal input into how our city operates. I will vote no on Proposal 1. It is an insidious form of voter suppression.
All right, who's next? Yes, sir, in the back.
Hello, John Galeka, Royal Avenue, Royal Oak. Regarding the August 7th Elks Club incident, the attack by your political appointee on Royal Oak businessman Greg Stanlogico resulted in surgery on a smashed collarbone with screws in the plate and has kept him off work. You were told you were not welcome at the Elks Club door because you would cause a disturbance, much as troublemakers are turned away from private bars that, yes, are open to the general public. Your continued insistence to come in resulted in your political appointee slamming someone into a concrete wall. You had posted on social media that Saturday, very quickly after, at 10:55, immediately after the incident. The Oakland County prosecutor since then, your political friend, neglected to prosecute, citing mutual combat, but really, only one person was put in a hospital. And only one person, yours, appeared to be the hothead. Well, how do we know that? We saw in a video that another of your political appointees posted online a week after the attack, altered with arrows and colored stop action from the raw footage you shot. In the video, your hands moving in front as you're talking. You showed up to the meeting while videotaping. Beyond the injury itself, that's the most disturbing part. Irrespective of the legal aspect, how is walking around, barging into meetings with a video camera not immature and really creepy? Why did you persist at the door when asked to leave? Because walking in while filming would be a disturbance. Was your camera meant to intimidate during or after the event? Was it meant for raw footage to be edited later? Why did your accomplice in arms, knowing you were filming at the door, feel so comfortable in smashing someone into a wall? If you're against guns and violence, then why did you have one political appointee post a video of your other political appointee violently smashing someone to a concrete wall? How are all these things not creepy and bizarre and immature and dangerous to people's lives? Let alone harassment and phone threats after social media postings by you and your supporters that weekend? How is that making Royal Oak a safe place? I'd like a grown-up in charge, please.
All right, thank you for that interesting public comment. All right, who's next? Anybody?
I didn't hear you.
Going once?
I didn't hear Mr. Harrison.
Going twice. Mr. Wolf? Mr. Wolf? Mr. Wolf? Mr. Wolf, you do not have the floor. Mr. Wolf? All right, 10-minute break, everyone. We'll take care of this issue. This, we'll be back for a quick, after a quick recess. All right, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. I appreciate everyone's patience. As you can see, sometimes we have to take a little break to get order in this room. It's a professional business meeting and we have to treat it as such. Folks have public comment. We follow the rules. We can say what we want at public comment, you know, cast doubt, make false accusations, whatever we want, but we can't interrupt the meeting. Okay? So that's a very important thing. I think all of you understand that. And we just, every, it seems like every two weeks, we have to remind some other folks that this isn't their meeting, it's the meeting of the people, and that we have to have order. So thank you for your patience.
Hey, are you want to mention about the microphones?
Oh, yeah. So there were some comments on the microphone. This microphone is on. It's green. And everything is being picked up and recorded on TV. They could hear it in the back room. We had confirmation from some people watching at home that it's being picked up. For those in the room, there might have been an issue with the speakers or something like that, with a computer issue, but I think we have that resolved. But the point is, is that all the public, we heard the public comment up here and everybody online heard the public comment. And so, you know, the green light's on. And I think City Clerk Hallis said issue's been, you know, at least now the speakers, it sounds like, have been resolved. Okay, so good. All right. So we are still in public comment, technically. Anybody else wish to speak at public comment tonight? All right, going once, going twice. All right, we'll bring the meeting back up to this side of the table. And we are at the... Um, and we are at the consent agenda, number seven. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda to talk about separately? Okay, I don't see anything. I'm specifically looking down this way. Person in the blue blazer? Okay. All right, so the consent agenda now consists of City Commission meeting minutes from August 9th and 23rd, approval of appointments, committee recommendations, approval of appointments, committee rotations, uh, claims from August 27th, uh, August 27th special pay, September 7th, September 10th, approval of purchase orders, declaration of disposal of surplus property, proclamation designating National Rail Safety Week in Royal Oak, approval of agreement for tri-party funding for the 12-mile road preservation overlay project, approval of dedication of public streets and resolutions for certification at Kenton Masoyak roads. Uh, non-action item that we have in the consent tonight is the July 2021 investment report. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as rem? Motion by Commissioner Perush? Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas? Any discussion? Um, Commissioner Kolo.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just want to recognize the people on the appointments committee, um, particularly the uh, people filling vacancies tonight. Um, Ms. Cheesem, here in the audience. Uh, it, it's great that we have volunteers out there. You know, I say this every time, but it's amazing that we have so many people willing to leave their families for a night, leave their loved ones, leave their friends, and really just come out and help the city. So thank you, Ashley Marisol, Anne Marie Clark, Rebecca Cheesem, Nathan Riley, John Schmidt, Samantha Grant, Sean Dumlop, and Corey Reiser. Um, you have a lot of work ahead of you, particularly those on the traffic committee, so. Um, but I appreciate everyone who's uh, coming out and helping us.
Anybody else? Yeah, I'll just echo those comments. And uh, Ms. Cheesem, you know, thank you again for, for showing up tonight. And uh, there's a lot of work to be done in the city, a lot of opportunity we can jump on, a lot of planning we can do for future generations. And um, especially in today's divided political times, um, it takes, uh, it takes a committed person to get up here, put their name out there, themselves out there to, to make good things happen in Royal Oak. So to all the, the folks that put their name on the list and that accepted these appointments, we're very grateful on behalf of the city. So thank you. All right, any other discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, that brings us to item eight on tonight's agenda, which is the approval of planning commission recommendation conditional rezoning of 1006 East 11 Mile Road, second reading. Mr. Twain.
Uh, Mayor, members of commission. Uh, this was in front of you on your August 9th meeting for first reading. Uh, as you indicated, it is a conditional rezoning um, of 1006 East 11 Mile Road from uh, neighborhood business to mixed use two. Uh, the commission did approve it on first reading. Uh, the one outstanding issue that's remaining that uh, kept this from being on the consent agenda was discussion of the fee for uh, tree removal. Uh, you may recall that uh, the number of trees in terms of inches um, did not meet the ordinance requirements, so the planning commission's recommendation included a fee of some $40,100 in that proposal. Uh, the petitioner was given the opportunity to go back and put some uh, evidence together or documentation together and ask the City Commission to consider a reduced fee. Uh, they have done that, presented it for your consideration this evening. Uh, basically, the petitioner is asking that uh, trees A, B, and C, uh, that's identified in your packet, uh, not be included due to the poor condition of those trees. Uh, and then that they're, they are asking that trees J and L only count towards a, a reduced uh, number of inches and a half. If the commission is acceptable to the petitioner's request, uh, that would cut the uh, the required fee down to $23,700. Uh, that's the remaining outstanding issue is uh, the implantation of what fee is being included in this uh, a request for development. I believe the petitioners are here if you have questions of them.
All right, any questions for Mr. Twain first? Okay. No questions for the petitioners? Oh, Commissioner.
I have questions for, well, it could be from Mr. Twain or the petitioners. But I'll start with Mr. Twain. Um, if I, I recall at the last meeting, this was before us, we asked that an arborist take a look at the photos to determine uh, the viability of the trees prior to them being torn down. Uh, in the letter that we received, it appears that it is a recommendation or at least a, an understanding by the petitioners themselves. Do you know if there was an arborist that took a look at these trees?
Well, we did send it out to DPS. I, I think it's difficult to make a decision based on photographs of the condition of a tree. Uh, what I would say is based on the photographs that were provided for A, B, and C, there were other trees in those photographs that did include um, leaves and other things on the trees where the trees under consideration were bare. If that's the condition, I would, you know, concur. But I think without physically seeing them, it would be hard for the arborists to make uh, an evaluation. So it was sent there. I don't believe they really had uh, the ability to make an evaluation based on that. As far as cha- trees J and L, I think their arguments predicated mostly on the fact that the building that they removed was in close proximity and the root system would have been damaged simply by removing the, the, the building itself and the foundation. Whether that's acceptable to the commission or not, I think is in your purview. Uh, and you could ask the petitioners to support their um, position in regards to that. But it was sent to DPS, I just, I don't think they were in any position to make that evaluation.
So the determination that's within the correspondence that we received, that's from the petitioners, not necessarily from DPS?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Questions? Comments? Motion? Commissioner Dubac?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so I'm happy to move forward with this project, but my position on the, the enforcement of our tree ordinance remains the same. I think we built this deliberately, um, not just to help us establish a tree fund where we can aggressively, uh, you know, replant and grow and strengthen our tree canopy, but also so that it's at a price point where a developer looking at a piece of land has to, you know, get some consideration to whether or not those trees must come down as part of the project. And I, while I appreciate where the petitioners coming from, um, you know, in wanting to negotiate the cost, I, I'm not willing to, you know, send them a signal that this is negotiable, that it's a starting point for a conversation. I would rather us say, this is our ordinance, this is what we put on the books, we did it deliberately, this is not an oversight, we built it this way on purpose. Uh, so I would, I would like to see us move forward uh, with the tree assessment as originally presented, or as, as, as calculated according to our ordinance, uh, without exception. Uh, so I will move for the approval of the resolutions included in here with the full cost of the tree replacement fee per our ordinance.
Motion by Commissioner Dubac, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Kolo. Discussion. Uh, Commissioner Douglas?
Uh, yeah, I'll vote against this motion. Um, it, we saw the photos of trees that were clearly dead. Um, and I just, to, to be making them replace trees that were dead just seems kind of counterintuitive here. Um, uh, I, I think that what they proposed is fair and I would support actually their, their counterproposal.
Commissioner Macy, then Commissioner Kolo.
Well, what, thought I'm in the middle? Um, so I see, I, I agree with Commissioner Dubac that we want our tree ordinance to stand as if we wrote it that way for a reason and we want to be collecting this money to go back into our tree fund. Uh, we want this to be part of the calculation that people are making when they want to do work in our work. Um, but I also agree with Commissioner Douglas that the picture, one of the tree that was right up into the wires and then two trees that are very clearly dead, um, those trees needed to come down. And so would we have, would we, would they have gotten a break if they hadn't brought those trees down as part of this? Um, maybe if like, if that had been in their calculation, like, well, we're gonna have to pay more if we take these down and then they're leaving up these dead trees and these trees into the wires? So my position would be that A, B, and C we would remove and J and L I would leave as, as is, as calculated. It's not persuasive to me that just because the building had to come down, the trees were removed, it seems like a circular argument. Because we're doing this development, we had to remove these trees. Well, yeah, that's why you have to pay for the trees that you had to remove as part of the development. So, um, I'm in the middle.
Commissioner Kolo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, at the meeting when we originally discussed this, the direction was an arborist would look at the evidence presented and an arborist would give us recommendations based on their assessments and the finding. I'm not an arborist. I don't know what the condition of that tree is. I don't know if there's other reasons why the lease might not be on it. But I do know it's what we asked for and it's not what we're presented with tonight. And that's the criteria that we set forth as saying this is why we would potentially deviate from our tree ordinance. The tree ordinance is here for a very specific reason, to encourage trees to stay on properties. It's encouraged them not to be cut down and to maintain our canopy now and into the future. While I do, I, I recognize that there are a lot of trees that left here. You know, Commissioner Macy's right, some probably would have had to be trimmed. I don't know if they would have to be cut down to make ways for wires. We have plenty of trees and right of ways that are below wires and grown into wires. Um, that DC comes around and cuts down. Um, yes, the people live around 12 Mile, probably not nearly enough with how often the power goes out sometimes. But there's definitely tree trimming that can happen as opposed to complete removal. So short of having an arborist recommendation that those trees can stay, I don't think it's met our criteria, both in tree ordinance and then on the second motion that's presented less than a month ago.
Yeah, I'll just add, you know, my comments to the mix. Um, I mean, I wholeheartedly agree with Commissioner Dubac in, at the highest 10,000-foot level. I'm very proud of the work that we've done with this tree ordinance. I think it is a, a major step forward in preserving and protecting our tree canopy in the city of Royal Oak and to the extent that we have to make um, some balancing to, 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 for progress that there is a strong consideration for replenishing um, the canopy in the city. I struggled, like I did last time, with, you know, a couple different things. The one was this ordinance was kind of being drafted once this project had already been underway. And so that still sticks with me that, you know, um, I don't think it's gonna set, in my opinion, it's gonna set a precedence because this is one of those unique gray areas where this particular project was right, you know, in the middle before, already underway, trees were cut, designs were in, um, before this ordinance was actually passed. And so I think that there's got to be some consideration for that. And I think as well, oh, we didn't have an arborist, but I do agree with Commissioner Macy. You can look at the pictures and see that the trees were, you know, not healthy. There were green leaves and these ones didn't have it. And um, I do agree with you on J and L. I think that that is a, um, you know, the argument, I mean, you could have built a smaller building or you could have done something, you know, different. So I can't, I can't support J and L, but I definitely could support um, A, B, and C and the one in the wires. So, um, I think it's A, B, and C at the top.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, and with that, I'm gonna have a really hard time. Even though I'm passionate about our tree canopy, um, I think given the, the merit of the situation, given the dynamics of it, this is a one-off, unique, I don't think it's setting any precedent and I don't know that I can, I can support the motion. Commissioner Perush?
Uh, I can't support the motion either, pretty much for the same reason. Um, we are good friends with the property owners next door, the dentist. And I was there with them, not so much when the trees were removed, but when the property was being cleared and the stumps of the trees were being removed and it was being leveled. And it was clear, looking at the stumps that were left, that there were at least three trees that were hollowed. And you know what we're all talking about, the silver maple trees that um, get hollowed out in the middle and get weakened and they can look pretty healthy until it all falls over because it's hollow. That's happened numerous times in our own neighborhoods. So I can't support including A, B, and C in this, in this proposal and in this list of costs. I go back and forth about J and L, I could go either way on that. But I think specifically A, B, and C should be removed from the list because they weren't viable trees. It was clear when you looked at them, not only on the pictures, but in real life when you looked what was left of them as they were removing all the debris, that uh, they were not gonna be long for this world, standing up, let alone producing any leaves. So, um, I don't think they belong on the list.
Commissioner Dubac?
Sure, if I understood uh, why our arborist didn't weigh in properly, it's that the arborist's opinion was that one cannot determine from these photos the viability of those trees? So I'm not comfortable saying that I, someone who is not an expert in this in any way, can determine from these photos the health of those trees. I think we're also opening the door to after a tree is torn down, if it shows signs that it may have had, uh, you know, a pending issue, uh, although the tree might have had 20, 25 years of life, that we're opening the door for someone to petition us to now have that tree from the calculation. I think that this is, I think a dangerous precedent to set where this is a bargaining position as opposed to ordinance as we wrote it. So I stand by my motion.
Mr. Hunt?
I feel like I'm in the middle, um, like Commissioner Macy, however, for a different reason. I do understand the, the reason for our tree ordinance and, um, you know, it's an aggressive tree ordinance and it's um, placed there for a reason for the preservation of our trees here in the city of Royal Oak. But my concern comes with the fact that this ordinance was drafted while this project was in the works. Um, like Mr. Mayor stated, this is a um, sort of a one-off and sort of a novel position for the petitioners to be in. Uh, so I can't support the motion based on the fact that, you know, they were in the middle of proposing this project while the drafting of the, the um, ordinance was in place.
Mr. Macy?
Yes, I think the position's now been multiple times stated, but I, I just wanted to say about the pictures, my understanding was that arborist said you couldn't determine a tree's health from pictures, not from necessarily these pictures. I, that was at least my understanding. It wasn't like they looked at this and like, I can't tell. They said, we can't tell from pictures, period. We need to see the tree. So, I mean, that's, there's still a point there. The arborists didn't look and say anything about these trees, but I don't think, I don't think it is a criticism of our looking at these photos and whether or not, we're not saying we're better than the arborists because we can determine they're dead when they did, they didn't. That's my, no.
Anybody else? All right, so the uh, motion on the table is to move forward with the $40,100. And that, I mean, pretty much has the motion. Any other discussions, everyone understand the motion?
I'm sorry, Mr. Arbour, I believe the motion is approval of the project with the full amount in effect.
That's what he said.
Yes, you're right, correct.
He just said the $40,000.
Yeah, no, you're right. Um, you're right, okay. But just to be clear, if, if I'm doing a little math here, Mr. Lael, uh, if it doesn't pass, it doesn't mean the project doesn't go through. It just means someone else can make a different um, motion and we should be fine.
That is correct.
Okay, good. All right, any other discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, 5-2. All right, anyone else want to make another motion? Commissioner Macy?
Move approval of the project with the removal of A, B, and C from the calculation of trees.
Motion by Commissioner Macy, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hunt, discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion passes. All righty. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, that brings us to item nine, which is approval of extension downtown social district.
Uh, this item is in front of the commission. Mary called back in April. Uh, the commission did approve of the creation of a downtown social district under the state statutes. We have been working and giving that up and operating. Uh, the district has operated over the summer. Uh, we did have 16 establishments that received approval from the City Commission. Fifteen of those have received their approval from the MLCC. Uh, as of drafting this letter last week, we've only had 11 that are actually using the district based on the distribution of the cubs to those entities. Uh, if the commission does extend it this evening, we're gonna reach out to the others tomorrow and find out either why they haven't made inquiries or if they're still interested. As I indicated in the memo, uh, the original approval of, for the district was to expire by resolution at the end of this month, September 30th of 2021. The reason this is in front of you is to make sure the commission wants to extend it and take it and fill out a date. Uh, the date suggested in the resolution is June 30th of 2022. The date suggested in the resolution is June 30th of 2022. That date was arrived after the input from the city chief and their annual review of MLCC licenses occurring every year, and conducting this review and extension as part of that process.
Any questions for Mr. Twain? Mr. Collo and Commissioner Macy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Twain, when we first discussed this, we talked about the types of cups that we would have, and those cups, I see modeling them over there, those are beautiful recyclable cups, they had the intention of being recycled throughout downtown. We, I believe, have three recycling containers downtown. Can you give us an update on what we can expect for recycling those cups in the future?
Oh, well, these are recyclable, they have the logo on them. Mr. Kulewski is here to kind of give you an overview of the recyclable process and how that's planned to occur.
Yes, we have four of these locations for recycling within the social district as it's defined, all of which are on Main Street between Third and Fourth. To add more of those types of recycling units would involve an additional contract for servicing them. As it stands now, we are, the four units that are there are being serviced by our contractor. It's kind of a courtesy, because they have a part of a route that's there, but if we were to extend out, it would involve a quite a more significant contract. Now, I have some good news on that front, is that as of last week at the SACRA board meeting, as part of kind of the push from some of the member communities for this very issue, because other cities, Ferndale, for example, are questioning the same thing, they are, on our behalf, they're going to set up a sort of test, guinea pig, well, we would be guinea pigs in it, but a test program that would permit downtown recycling with very specific type of containers, all of which the community can choose, but SACRA would be part of facilitating that contract for service. That makes it considerably more affordable because of the scale of the economy, and so that's where we're at. We discussed this at our board meeting last Wednesday, it was a surprise to me, and it was good news, and I heard it was a test, and I was the quickest on the phone after the meeting to get ahold of SACRA, and managed to secure us a place in that for the pilot program. Bad news about that, to some degree, is that by the time it gets up and started, we're talking like, late winter, by the time these could be deployed on the streets, I think that's a fair price to pay for that, I guess in the meantime, that's our only concern with it. But there's exciting news on that front. I know there's been discussion that can DPS just add additional cans and grab those for recycling, and logistically, we can't, we don't have the manpower or time to do that, and that would require us to remove these plastics, or typically what it is, usually soiled, we'd have to hold them in the bags off-site somewhere else, aggregate them, and take them to a transfer station, it's just, it's not feasible. But if we had a contractor in it, they could throw it in their truck and take it right there. So that is being pursued, and I hope to be back with you guys soon with details on that. As for right now, the other option, I guess, would be to have, as we've done like at one of the parks for recycling plastic bottles, at Widia, we managed to work with a resident nearby to say, we'll give you a recycling cart, but you have to take that out, you have to find one volunteer in the neighborhood that can hold it at their house, or roll it out to the curb for pickup. That works out, maybe there's some other kind of in-between that can be worked out with the business owners that are participating in this downtown, until we get to a more permanent solution.
Okay, that's all I have right now, thank you.
Commissioner Macy?
I was just gonna move approval.
Okay, with a motion by Commissioner Macy, we have a second by Commissioner Prush, discussion? Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I just want to add that I don't think we should consider the winter just a downtime. The, last year, the Michigan Association of Planning did a seminar at its annual conference on winter cities, on, you know, public recreation in downtowns in places in Canada. And there are a lot of ways that you can activate the street and activate your public spaces, Centennial Park will be, Centennial Commons will be completed, so I just, I would ask that our DDA, you know, be, and planning department, be aware and think about opportunities to really use this social district, the social district throughout the season, and not just wait until spring.
Royal Oak Social District in the winter, your beer always stays cold.
Yeah. Hot cocoa, anybody?
All right, good point, Commissioner Douglas. Anybody else? All right, with no other comment, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, more districting in the social to come. All right, that brings us to our second-to-last agenda item tonight, which is the approval of special assessment temporary incentive program. Ms. Donahue, how are you doing this evening?
Good evening, Mayor and city commissioners. Tonight, I am bringing forth a, something for your consideration here with our special assessment paving program. Normally, the first time any street in Royal Oak is paved is by special assessment directly to the adjacent property owners, and so typically, they pay 100% of the cost to pave a road. So the few gravel roads that we do have around the city, in order to get those paved, that is the city policy that was set decades ago. What we've done in the past, in the 80s, for example, and then again with this current road millage, is provide an incentive program where the city will pay for half of the road cost to pave it, and then the residents are then only stuck with the other half of that cost as opposed to 100%. So that was in effect for the beginning of the millage, we got quite a few streets paved that way, I want to say it was 12 or 13 blocks. And then we opted at the very beginning, when we set up this policy, that it would expire December 31st of 2020, giving staff enough time to make sure we had enough funding for the remaining years of the millage, that we could pave everything, we promised we would pave, and so we closed it without issue at the end of last year. This year, we did receive a request for a petition for one of our streets that, really, if we could pave this street, it would be fantastic. It's Parkdale, it's a very long street, one of our longer unpaved sections of road, and the cost is fairly high for residents. And so they did approach myself and city manager, Brake, just to ask, would the city commission consider reopening this program to allow this to move forward at a more affordable rate? So that's what I'm bringing forward for you tonight, is to basically reopen the program that we already had, give it a new expiration date of June 30th of 2023, that would allow us to catch any last-minute petitions and still get it paved within our last year of the road millage, which is 2024. So those resolutions are there, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Questions for the city engineer, Donahue. Commissioner Dubac?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Donahue. I supported this, you know, kind of special incentive program when we originally passed the road millage. It did really help get us a lot of roads paved, and made a lot of residents happy, not paying the millage on top of the special assessment. Where do we stand from budget perspective on the road budget, the road plan, and what we have left to do?
Right now, we're on track with everything that we have scheduled for the remaining years of the millage. If anything, we may have a little extra money, I don't want to give anyone too high of hopes, but I think we'll absolutely have enough to finish what we promised we would do, which is basically fix up every local road in the city with whatever improvement was appropriate for that road. So we're on track to do that, we have the budget remaining, and it's in our capital improvement plan for the next few years here.
And you're confident that with the request that may come in, should we expand this program, that we'll still be able to stay on budget, not have to dig in the general fund in order to get done what we plan to get done on top of this?
I am, I think we definitely have enough budgeted for that, and I also don't, I really don't think it's very likely that we're going to get a huge number of people asking for special assessments. If they didn't ask for it in the first five years of the millage, when we notified them of this incentive program, I don't know that we're really gonna get a whole lot more in the next couple of years here.
Well, a lot of these folks are expensive, because it's a lot of frontage for a single home and a lot of home turnover over the last, you know, four or five years, you might've had a homeowner or two in key areas decide that they do want it, that's gonna change the dynamic. But those would still come forward to us, where we would look at the petition, how many folks were for and how many folks were against before we grant it, this is just offering the opportunity for the shared funding with the city.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll move for approval.
A motion by Commissioner Dubac, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Prush. All right, discussion on this motion. We go with Commissioner Prush and then Commissioner Collo.
I just have a question about a different type of situation, and this, I think, happened more frequently, more years ago than this program, where there was a situation where there was an unpaved section of a side street, and it essentially was the stub end of a side street, and there were only two property owners that had property adjacent to the side street. And instead of petitioning for paving, for whatever reason, the petitioners came to us and said, would you consider vacating the street, and then having the property split down the middle and each half going to the adjacent property owner? And in those situations, it worked for the most situation, because their driveways were constructed in such a way, and the driveways and the garages and that were situated in such a way so that that worked. I don't know how many other situations that we have in the city for that, but is that type of program still available to homeowners as well? If they are in that situation, instead of petitioning to have it paved, given the right types of circumstances, can they petition to have the road vacated and then split between the two adjacent property owners?
Yes, absolutely, that would go between engineering and planning, we would work together with them on that. Really, the only consideration there is, are there any public utilities that we need to have under easement? But when we're talking about those little short stuffs, I would gladly get rid of those and give those away and take them out of our responsibility, so.
Okay. Do we notify people of that possibility at all, ever, or do we just wait for them to come to us?
You know, as long as I've been here, which obviously isn't super long, I'm not aware that we have reached out with that, we've really only given the information about the special assessment paving, but what we could do is go back and do another letter just like we have in the past, but add that information in there as well. And maybe just for the lots that are side lots, dead-end streets, I think we have 16 of our 35 segments are that scenario, so there could be a fair number of them that we could vacate.
Yeah, that's more than I would've guessed, so, yeah, perhaps I include that in this so that if that's something that adjacent property owners would like to do, I think the prospect of getting additional property is, would be appealing to some people, not others, would just be more lawn to mow, but on the other hand, for some people, it would be an attractive thing if they've got a small lot already.
Commissioner Collo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Donahue, is there a cost difference in maintaining a unimproved road versus an improved road?
I don't have the figures in front of me, but my understanding is that it is significantly more expensive for the city to maintain gravel roads than it is for a paved road, because we're out there doing maintenance in terms of grading the road pretty often, and that's, you know, skilled labor with specialized equipment to do that, so that's an ongoing, never-ending process, and of course, there's always complaints, you know, the road's too bumpy, too many potholes, so there's a lot of customer service that goes into that as well, from DPS's side of things.
Yeah, and you know, I think that is a great reason to continue this program, to get some more roads improved in the city. You know, it's Parkdale, too, for those who've traveled down it, you may think it's a, it's a street, when it's not, it's a Nashville-topped piece of dirt. So I think this is a great program, I'm happy to support it, and I think it's gonna save the money, save the city money in the long run on our long-term cost, so this is all long-term planning here for the city.
Okay, anybody else? All right, yeah, I think this is good, I think it's an intelligent approach, I appreciate Ms. Donahue's tenacity in planning and doing a checkpoint and taking the opportunity to extend things after a checkpoint, I think this is a smart way to do engineering, a smart way to manage the city's business, so I think there's another story here. You know, we got the road millage in, we've done a tremendous amount of work, we've done it pretty much on time, on budget, and we're also doing it with several other cool programs like this one, and doing it fiscally responsible, we're managing it appropriately, I mean, this is good news, we have a great engineer and a great engineering department, so thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the table, if there's no other discussion, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, so we're good. So this brings us to the last item on tonight's agenda, which is one we added, and I probably can't even read my handwriting that appropriately here, but we added to a discussion on the recommendation presented to us in closed session from council. Anyone want to take this up or make a motion? Commissioner Prush?
I'll make a motion that we accept the city attorney's recommendation for negotiations in the case of Henderson versus City of Royal Oak.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Prush, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Collo. Discussion. With none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, notwithstanding something for the benefit of our friends and relatives and family and everybody in Royal Oak, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So what?
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, we have a second, second by Commissioner Macy, discussion on this adjournment motion. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Good night, everyone, thank you for tuning in, and we'll see you here in a couple weeks, take care.